We'll call our Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission to order. Ms. Ramsey, if you would call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
You have the minutes, excuse me, the minutes of our March 3 meeting in your packet. Are there any questions at that meeting? If not, we'll call for a motion, please.
Move.
Second. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Mr. Moore?
Would you please order that the record applies here including all of the relevant statutory and regular tort conditions, the commission's entire file for each application, qualifications of staff witnesses. Finally, a request that you administer the oath to those witnesses, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. You all swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. You, in our packets, commissioners, we have our subdivision site development plans that were mailed to everybody. Are there any questions? Hearing none, they will be approved. We have no old business. Our first public hearing tonight is Joseph E. and Nancy Crafton have filed an application to rezonate a portion of a tract of land containing approximately 1.3 acres located at 888 Old Zion Church Road from agriculture to RE residential estate with a general development plan. If this is approved, our, or, they have also applied for a waiver from a maximum lot coverage on a portion of tract of land containing approximately, tract of land located at 888 Old Zion Road. This property is zone A. So, Ms. Drain?
If you can spread, Mr. Miss Crafton?
Question, are Mr. and Miss Crafton here?
Pass it.
Thank you, Hamp. All right. All right. Moving to item number three. Denny and Elizabeth S. Van Arsdale and Barry Maple have filed an application to rezonate tract of land containing approximately 1.189 acres located at Zero Elrod Road, approximately .11 tenths of a mile from Hunter's Crossing Way from Ag to RS1, single-family residential with a general development plan.
All right. We had a pre-application meeting on February 9, 2022, for the property that you mentioned, and this is outlined in yellow. The current zoning is agriculture. The proposed zoning is RS1A. The future land use is low-density residential, and the applicants are proposing to rezone 1.189 acres at Zero Elrod Road from agriculture to RS1A, single-family residential, in order to subdivide the property into two building lots. If you will flip over, we have some site characteristics review for you to look at. I won't touch on any of those unless you have some questions on them. We also have some site design and compatibility review there. I will point out that existing homes down on building orientation at the bottom of your page, existing homes along the same side of Elrod Road are setback from the front property line, more than the minimum 25-foot front yard setback required by the zoning ordinance, and more than 30 feet front yard setback proposed in the, in the development plan conditions, number five. The home to the west is located roughly 90 feet off the front of the property line, and the home to the south is located roughly 60 feet from the property line. This application complies with a majority of the items addressed relating to site design with considerations noted regarding the proposed front yard setback. Moving down to the general develop, the development plan conditions, the applicants have submitted the following. There shall be maximum of two lots. The minimum area of each lot shall be 20,000 square feet, and the minimum lot width shall be 100 feet. Number two, each new single-family residence shall have at least 1,800 square feet of heated-cooled living space exclusive, exclusive of garages and porches. Number three, each new residence shall be constructed of brick-stone concrete-based siding. Foundations shall be of brick or stone. Each new residence shall have an attached two-car, side- or rear-loaded garage. Number four, each new residence shall be oriented to face Elrod Road. Any new access points to the property shall be coordinated with and approved by the Warren County Public Works Department for access to Elrod Road. Number five, each new residence shall be setback a minimum of 30 feet from the property Number six, all utilities shall be located underground, and, number seven, addresses sinkholes. There. We have the focus 2020 category review for, for you to look at there. I could answer any questions regarding that, but if you want to flip over to your front page there, points to consider. As I mentioned, existing homes along the same side of Elrod Road are setback from the front property line, more than the minimum 25-foot yard setback required by the zoning ordinance, and more than a 30-foot yard setback proposed in DPC number five. The home to the west is located roughly 90 feet off the front property line. The home to the south is located roughly, roughly 60 feet from the property line, and the planning commission could, should consider if a 30-foot front yard setback is compatible with the surrounding properties and the resulting impact on the existing character and pattern of the development along this section of Elrod Road. That is all we have for the staff report, but we can answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners, any questions?
So, other than, and we'll address the setback with the applicant, but one, one of the lots, of course, is right in the curve of Elrod Road, and we have said that the home is going to face Elrod Road, which means it could face one of two directions. Do we have a preference here?
I think in the pre-application meeting, the applicant expressed maybe angling the home on the corner to where it is oriented to face kind of, if we're looking at the aerial, it would face the inner portion of the curve there, not necessarily north or east.
So, it isn't staff desire, because currently, all the homes, all the adjacent homes are facing the same direction, but at some point, there may be homes on the other side of the curve of Elrod Road. So, we're okay with that description as we have it now? Just facing Elrod Road?
Yes. I think the main concern was that we didn't think it would be appropriate for a rear facade or a side facade to face Elrod Road.
So, just to clarify, we would have one side facade facing Elrod Road because of the, the corner lot if it faces?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
That may be worth clarifying then with the applicant, but I do remember they specifically mentioned maybe angling the home, at least the lot that would be furthest north.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions? Is the applicant here or their representative would like to make any comments?
I'm good.
All right.
So, I do have a question for the applicant.
Yes, sir. If the applicant or the representative would come to the microphone, please. Commissioner Graham has a question, please.
Well, it would be either Barry Maple?
Me, Barry.
Okay. Mr. Maple, would you state your name and address, please, sir?
Barry Maple, 142 Neil Howell Road, Bowling Green, 42104.
You swear to tell the truth tonight?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Maple. Mr. Graham has a question.
Sure.
So, so, Mr. Maple, the, we've depicted a 30-foot setback, but clearly, the adjacent homes have more than a 30-foot setback, and the lot you're dividing actually is slightly deeper than theirs. Do you have any objection to increasing that setback to align with those existing homes?
No, that's my plan, anyway.
All right. And so, this is a question for staff. If you'll hold on just for a second. What, so what do we need to stipulate here in order to get an acceptable setback? We've got 60 and 90.
Well, I think it could possibly be different depending on where the home is built, and kind of along the lines of what you were talking about earlier. I think mainly, the home in the curve would be, I guess, as far as the issue might be with wording the development plan condition, but the lot on the south, I think, if the home faces Elrod Road and is setback 60 feet from the front property line, that's going to be in line with, with what's there now on the south, if we're looking at the aerial. But then to the north?
So, if you, if I may, I'd like to kind of call these out. These are numbered lot one and two.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we could, and I want to give Mr. Maple some latitude here, but if we could, could we say a minimum 60-foot setback on lot two? And because of the radius, he may need a little bit of latitude on how to set that, that lot number one back. And I'm okay with a 35 or 40-foot setback, as long as he doesn't put, doesn't put this house in front of, if you will, and clearly, I guess you would be building both of these houses, so it's not in your best interest to move it too far up. But it could be that you're going to have a 35 or 40-foot setback along that radius. So, I guess what I'm looking for you, for, from you is just a verbal commitment that that is your intent, is to align them, and do you have any objection to making lot two a 60-foot setback?
Do not.
All right. And, and so, the last question is, for, for the corner lot, do you plan, do you, have you thought about how you want to orient that home?
Kind of catty-cornered, I guess, I think, because I didn't want to, which way to really put the house.
That's fine.
That's where my setback line's going to be kind of.
Yeah. I, I, I'm okay with leaving it facing Elrod Road. That gives them some latitude for that. So, so Hamp, do you need to make an adjustment there?
Can't catch you up?
Hamp, pull your mic down.
So, are we thinking about changing the development plan condition?
Number five, I think Commissioner Graham has suggested a 60-foot building setback for proposed lot number two that is shown on the concept plan.
Lot number one would remain as we have it set, set now?
The residents on lot one will be at 30, no, it'd be two, right?
Number two would be 60.
So, the residents on lot one shall be setback a minimum of 30 feet from the front property line? Correct. And then, the residents on lot two would be a 60-foot front property setback? Okay. And, I'm sorry, and this is, Mr. Maple?
Yes.
And do you agree to that?
I do, yes.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Thank you, Mr. Maple. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions or opposition to this zone request? Commissioners would call for a vote, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and condition upon a general development plan, document number 202122Z County. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with objective action to items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion's been approved, and we'll go before Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item tonight is item number four and item number five. Margie Duval and Bluegrass Supply Chain Services LLC have filed an application to rezonate tracts of land containing approximately 33.41 acres located at 1597 and 1609 Glasgow, Glasgow Road and 2333 Sunnyside Gotts Road from agriculture and RE residential estate to LI Light Industrial with a general development plan. Should this motion be approved, they have also applied for a variance from the required 1,000-foot setback between any above-ground storage tank and any residential district structure or use on the properties located at 1597, 1609 Glasgow Road and 23, 23, 2033 Sunnyside Gotts Road. These properties are currently zoned agriculture and RE residential estate. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting on February 16 for the properties you just outlined, located on Glasgow Road and Sunnyside Gotts Road. With the current zoning of Ag and RE, the current use of the properties includes agriculture and single-family residential with a future land use designation of industrial. Jumping onto page two, we'll touch on a couple of items in the site characteristics review. The first, let me jump to the site plan here. The staff has noted that the proposed setback along Sunnyside Gotts Road in development plan condition seven is 60 feet. With no parking allowed in such setback, staff suggested that the applicants increase the setback to 90 feet. Coupled with the 60-foot right-of-way along Sunnyside Gotts Road, this would result in a 150-foot separation from adjacent residential properties, which is similar to the restrictions in place for the transpark. Looking at page three, a couple of things under the site design and compatibility review section. Looking at the building materials review, current homes located in the area have brick exteriors. Homes along Sunnyside Gotts Road have vinyl and brick exteriors, and there are also agricultural metal, metal buildings and with wooden, or sorry, agricultural buildings with wooden and metal exteriors, and a majority of the nearby industrial buildings have metal exteriors with metal roofs. The applicants are proposing in development plan condition nine that exterior building materials will consist of metal or tilt-up concrete. Looking at the landscaping and screening section, just comparing the current binding elements that are in place for the transpark, those require a 100-foot wide berm along Glasgow Road to be 12 feet in height. Such berms shall include a mix of evergreens and shade trees in compliance with the planning requirements of the zoning ordinance. The applicants agreed in their development plan conditions, in number seven specifically, to install a 50-foot landscape buffer along Glasgow Road to include a berm averaging four feet in height, also to contain a mix of trees in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The applicants are also proposing vegetative screening along Sunnyside Gotts Road. That would be on the east side here, consisting of plannings required by the zoning ordinance for incompatible land uses, which would include six evergreens and three shade trees per 100 linear feet. The planning commission should consider if this is in keeping with the character of the existing berm requirements along Glasgow Road and the transpark, and if the proposed screening along Sunnyside Gotts Road is sufficient, considering the residential uses that are located on the east side of the road. The current binding elements for nearby properties in the transpark also require that loading docks be screened from adjacent residential uses. You'll see on the preliminary development plan that is on the screen currently, that the proposed loading and unloading areas would be screened by either the existing buildings or be oriented to face away from the residential uses. However, there's no requirement in the development plan conditions that require that the site be developed in this manner. Looking at the proposed open space, the applicants have proposed 20% open space in their development plan conditions. This is similar to the restrictions that are currently in place for the transpark. One difference between the current restrictions for the transpark and the proposed development plan conditions is the interior landscaping requirement for parking areas. The applicants are proposing 10% for this application, which is 5% more than the zoning ordinance requires. However, we have noted that the transpark, the most nearby properties in the transpark have a 20% landscape island requirement for interior vehicle use areas. Looking at signage on the back of page four, there is currently no freestanding signage along Sunnyside Gotts Road. Staff suggested during the pre-application meeting that any signage along Sunnyside Gotts Road be non-eliminated. The applicants have proposed in their development plan conditions that the property will be limited to one monument-style sign, which shall be no taller than eight feet in height, with no more than 80 square feet per sign face, and shall be located adjacent to Glasgow Road or adjacent to Sunnyside Gotts Road within 250 feet of Glasgow Road, and that signage shall not be backlit, but under this restriction, it could still be externally illuminated. Looking at the bottom of page four, you'll see the reference for the traffic impact study requirements, and a traffic impact study was not required for this proposal. There were no improvements requested by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Warren County Public Works has requested that the right-of-way for Sunnyside Gotts Road be widened to 60 feet, and that the pavement width for Sunnyside Gotts Road be widened to 30 feet from Glasgow Road to the primary entrance, which would be this entrance at the top of the plan here. Then, the primary entrance, as shown here, would be located at least 125 feet from Glasgow Road, and that a dedicated right and left turn lane will be installed on Sunnyside Gotts Road at its intersection with Glasgow Road. There's also a proposed emergency access point all the way to the south here, and in the future, if the proposed emergency access point is used for general access, Sunnyside Gotts Road shall be widened to 30 feet to this point, and the emergency access point shall be gated except when needed for emergency access. And the applicants did agree to this in development plan condition one. In total, on page five and six, there are 14 development plan conditions. I'll be happy to go through any of those individually if you see the need for that, but otherwise, they are there for your reference. Then, looking at the focus 2030 category review, we evaluated 13 items and found seven of those items to be in compliance. There were six items for the planning commission to evaluate for compliance, and in determining compliance with these action items, the planning commission should consider the proposed building setback and screening requirements along Sunnyside Gotts Road, including screening of loading areas, the berm that is proposed along Glasgow Road, proposed building materials, proposed interior vehicle use area landscaping, building height, location, and elimination of signage, and the variance that's requested for the above-ground fuel tank, which is in this location right here where the hand is. And we will touch on the variance next. On page seven, the section of the zoning ordinance from which this variance is being requested is in Article Five, Section 525(c)(14), and the specific use standards for above-ground storage tanks containing at least 1,000 gallons of flammable or hazardous substance shall be located a minimum of 1,000 feet from any residential district structure or use. If we jump back to the land use map, you'll see those yellow properties, those are the residential properties in question. And the section of KRS 10243 that you'll see on page seven outlines the findings that are necessary for granting a variance. The applicants did provide the narrative that's about halfway down page seven in order to address these findings. With that, I think I'll just jump back to page one and look at our points to consider. The first, again, looking at some of the differences between the binding elements that are currently established for the transpark versus the proposed development that is before you this evening. First, the current binding elements in the transpark, again, require a 12-foot tall, 100-foot wide berm along Glasgow Road. The applicants have agreed to install a four-foot tall, 50-foot wide landscape buffer along Glasgow Road with similar plantings, and they are also proposing vegetative screening along Sunnyside Gotts Road to include six evergreens and three shade trees per 100 linear feet. Two looks at those interior landscaping requirements. Again, the transpark has a 20% requirement for interior vehicle use area landscaping, and then, the proposal proposes a minimum of 10% interior vehicle use area landscaping. Then, there are three more on page two. The current binding elements for nearby properties in the transpark require a 150-foot setback from residential properties. The proposed setback for this application along Sunnyside Gotts Road is 60 feet, with no parking allowed in such setback. Next, the current binding elements for the transpark require that loading docks be screened from adjacent residential uses. Again, the preliminary development plan shows that the loading docks will face the interior portion of the site or will be screened from other buildings on the property. However, there is no requirement in the development plan conditions that addresses this. And then, last, just those points to consider on the signage along Sunnyside Gotts Road. Again, under the current restrictions, the signage could be externally eliminated. I think that is all for our points to consider in the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Hurt?
So, so, Rachel, I see your point. The way it's oriented now, if it was really built that way, it wouldn't need screening for the loading dock, but we don't know that they're going to build that exactly that way. So, so I guess that's a question for the applicant, and we would just need to put that into binding elements. Is that correct?
They're agreeable to that. That was just something we wanted you to consider. While it's shown on here, there's no requirement that it be developed that way.
Got it. And then, the other one was, tell me about this 150-foot setback. They have a 60-foot setback proposed. Are you just, are you suggesting that other industrial developments are closer to 150-foot?
No, I guess our, our point in the, point to consider is that the current binding elements that are in place for the transpark, if we go back to the land use map, you can see those industrial properties on the land use map in gray. So, the most proximate industrial uses and the binding elements for those properties require that in the event that they're within proximity of a residential property, that that setback for that particular lot be 150 feet from any residential use. And so, we had suggested a similar setback for this particular development, just based on those current binding elements that are in place for properties nearby in the transpark.
So, clearly, this is also a question for the applicant. What was the feedback that you got? Is it, is it something unique about this, this property and the way they need to orient it that prevents them from doing that 150-foot?
I'm honestly not sure. That was just our suggestion, suggestion, and then, the setback that's proposed in the development plan conditions is 60.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions from Ms. Hurt, from commissioners? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here or their representative would like to make comments or address the questions that were proposed?
Yes, Mr. Warren. Kevin Brooks, I represent the applicant. I swear to tell the truth.
Your address, please, sir.
1649 Chestnut Street, Bowling Green.
Thank you, sir.
I think what I might want to do is, if you'll indulge us for a second, is sort of do this the old-fashioned way, and we will address your questions, but let you just hear a little bit from the applicant and, and what the applicant's planning on doing here and so forth. It might, might help answer some of the questions. So, I would call John Higgins.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Higgins, your name?
John Higgins. I live at 5607 Woodburn Allen Springs in Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Higgins. This company's called, this Bluegrass is your company, is that correct?
Sir, Bluegrass Supply Chain Services.
And just tell the commission about yourself and your company. Just give us like a two-minute, where you've been and where you're going.
Absolutely. So, actually, this is our 20th year in business at Bluegrass Supply Chain. We're actually celebrating that here in September. We have sales a little more than $50 million. We employ about 800 people over a six-state area, of which about 200 are here in Warren County. This development would be about a $25 million development for us. It would create approximately 120 new jobs, something close to $7.2 million in payroll. I was telling Kevin earlier that last week, I attended a thing that Dan Cherry was honored, or he spoke at the chamber meeting, and I remember meeting him about 20 years ago and hearing about, you know, this area in northern Warren County, and I thought that would be a great place for our business to be. We have a location really close by at 350 Scotty's Way. That's about 160,000-square-foot facility, and that's currently our corporate headquarters, and we want to move some of those things that are there actually over to- and we want to move some of those things that are there actually over to this site. But it's a great place for us to be. We actually have multiple customers in this area that this site's going to serve their current needs as well as future needs for Warren County.
Briefly, why this site works for your company?
This site is an ideal site. You know, we could have looked at sites within the trans park, but this provides us really easy access onto and off of the new connector road. That's one of those key things for development in this area. And again, it's just proximity to our customers out there in that trans park area and in that northern Warren County area.
Everybody probably knows at this point, but we really didn't say, what does your business do?
I'm sorry. So we're a logistics company, so we help companies move things from point A to point B, mainly in automotive and also consumer products. But we warehouse different materials from them that come in from all over the world and help get that out to their customers, or actually to feed parts and components into their factories. We also would have about 120 tractors that would be, semi-tractors that would be located here, and so that's the reason for the fuel tank. We're kind of outgrowing the facility we currently have, and that would be the need to fuel those tractors and, you know, get those trucks out on the road. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. So a couple of things. Mr. Graham, you asked about the screening of the loading docks, and I confess that I meant to be in touch with Ms. Hurt to talk to her a little bit about this, because when I first saw that, it struck me, you know, how do you screen it? And there's no commitment to it. Of course, we think it is, the building itself provides the primary screening, and from our viewpoint, we're not moving that building. But we could, I haven't talked to my client, but I think we could do a development plan condition that says there'll be no loading docks facing Sunnyside Gotts Road. And that, does that get us there?
Or that they would be screened by a building between the road and the loading area? I guess, so the loading areas for this building are screened by this building, you wouldn't be able to see them, even though they face Sunnyside Gotts Road?
So Kevin, if I understand correctly, if you build it exactly the way you have it now, you're going to meet the requirement if we include this verbiage?
And that's the only way we can build it. But I mean, if, I mean, who knows? Somebody else might buy this property and develop it another way. So I think we could commit that there would be no loading docks visible from Sunnyside Gotts Road.
Does that get us there? Okay, so we'll just put that in a DPC.
Okay.
And, okay, so I think that addresses that one.
Yeah.
The other one was, tell me about the need for the 60-foot. Are you just giving yourself some latitude there, or is it the site?
Two or three things. First of all, the building, this is not necessarily your issue, but I will just tell you that this building, because this is such a good site, has actually shrunk a little bit from its optimal situation, because we want it right where it is. And I think what Ms. Hurt is saying is that we've already committed to a 60-foot setback, which I think is more than the ordinance requires, and we've done some screening, but she's suggesting 90, because 90 plus the width of the right-of-way would sort of approximate what's required in the trans park. Am I saying that right? Okay. So, and I guess we would say that extra, we're going to lose some parking. I mean, it's going to be hard, and just try to say nicely, we are not in the trans park. I understand the trans park has some really nice standards, and we've done our best to approximate every one of those that we can, but that doesn't work too well for us.
So your concern is that you would lose parking if you were to accommodate that 150-foot, and so you need that space?
Or shrink the building even more, and it's already a little narrower than he would like.
So after shrinking the building, you arrived at the 60-foot, is that right?
Yes, yes.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the narrower building was there before we even engaged with the staff, because that's the best we could do. Yeah.
And I guess it's appropriate to go ahead and address the fuel tank questions here as well now, or do we wait?
Yes, that's the same.
Yeah. So Kevin, it looks like it would be, just from a layperson's perspective, it would be very, very difficult for you to meet that 150, or that 1,000-foot. Is that right?
Yes, I'm looking for a pointer. So now if I can use it, I'll sort of give you the history of this. When we went to the pre-app, we had a tank somewhere kind of right in there, and it was 700 and something feet away, less than 800 feet, and staff pointed out to us the 1,000-foot rule. And so when we submitted it, we moved it back so that it's about 850 feet away, which is where it is right now. We considered trying to find a way to get it, if not 1,000, really close to 1,000. If we did that, we're moving it, we think, to a more dangerous place, right over here by the off-ramp. And when we measured it, we still would need a variance. We wouldn't need as much variance. Then we discovered, I don't know if this was a good idea or not, but we shared it with staff, that we were all focusing on these, this residential area over here. Well, there's a residence over here, too, and the 1,000-foot rule would apply to that. And when we, staff did this, and we did it, too, when we laid out those circles, both of those circles, the result is, we can't, we cannot do it without a variance anywhere on the site. So we think we're in the best spot, safest spot. And we also think that that ginormous building is a really nice protection, you know, from those residences, so.
So no matter, and it looks like you're exactly right. No matter what you do, you can't meet it. And so is it your testimony that this is the suboptimal solution, if you will, or the best alternate solution?
We honestly believe that, and I'll just say to you folks, if you say, well, we're not going to approve your variance unless you back it up another 50 feet, we'll do it. But we think that's kind of a meaningless thing, and it's less than optimal for our operation, so.
So thanks, Kevin. And this is a question for staff. Is this a safety thing, the 1,000-foot, or?
Yeah, that would have been placed in ordinance.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Brooks?
Kevin, is there, does this project create any type of noise issue of any kind for the area?
I don't think so. Trucks, I mean, they're trucks, but the interior operation is not noisy at all.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions for this application or opposition to this? Yes, sir. If you would approach the microphone, please.
Real quickly, Hamp, if I may, before this gentleman steps to the microphone. Did we make one DPC change there that they need to agree to?
Yes, we did.
Screening?
Yes.
And so we can do that, I guess, after we get, after we hear the testimony here? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Your name and address, please, sir?
My name is Farren Hogan. I live at 455 Sunnyside Gott Road.
Hogan, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
I live at 455. I also own two other properties there on Sunnyside, 365, which is the property directly across the track from the proposed building or buildings. And I also own 436 Sunnyside, which is further up. But I'm not against growth and development. That's, I make my living off of growth and development, obviously, but, and Ms. Duval and the family are fine people, and Bluegrass Supply Chain, I'm sure, is a great company. That being said, I don't think it's in the best for those of us in close proximity for what they're wanting to do here. A 38-foot-tall, 950-foot-long building is going to be pretty imposing right there at the entrance of Sunnyside Gott Road. On a, personally, I mean, for my future plans for that 365 Sunnyside Gott, I had hoped to someday demo that house. It's there, it's an old house, it's a rental house, and it's getting in worse shape and build a spec house there. Well, I know this is going to negatively affect the value of that lot with the noise. There will be noise there from the trucks for that property, no doubt. So I think it'll drop the property value of that lot, and it's certainly going to hurt the people directly across the road. There's no amount of truck, street, I'm sorry, trees or shrubs is going to block a four-story building, you know, that close to their houses and the road. I mean, I don't think 63 feet's enough or 90 feet, but I mean, there's a huge difference seeing a warehouse across the field and seeing one right on top of you. So I would just ask that y'all can consider that and do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a comment or a question or opposition to this request? Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Will you want to make the DP change?
If you bring.
We added a little condition relating to the loading docks. Did you hear all that?
Yes.
Do you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay.
It is that no loading dock shall be visible from Sunnyside Gotts Road.
Sure.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So one more question for staff, if I may. Previous gentleman, Mr. Hogan, it is landscaped on that side. I think his concern is no amount of landscaping would be sufficient, but it is landscaped on that side, is that correct?
There are trees that are currently along the railroad, and one of the development plan conditions. Now, I don't know if there are any gaps. It's hard to see on the aerial, because it's kind of right under the property line, but you can see that there is a line of trees. Not all of them are evergreen, some of them are. There is a development plan condition, let me find it, number 11. It says that healthy, mature trees along the property line adjacent to CSX Railroad having a caliper of at least four inches shall be preserved to the greatest extent practicable, to the extent development creates gaps in such tree lines. Such gaps shall be supplemented to provide screening as required for incompatible land uses under the zoning ordinance. And that standard would be six evergreens and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet.
They were to have to remove some of those trees, they would be required to fill those back in, is that correct?
Yes, under this proposed condition.
Or a gap, or a gap, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. No other questions from commissioners? Would call for a motion for the zoning map amendment, and then if approved, we would call for a motion for the variance.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number 202226ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and we'll go to the Bowling Green City Commission. The next item is for the variance, please. Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request for a variance at 233 Sunnyside Gotts Road and 1597 and 1609 Glasgow Road, docket number 2022V08. A variance of 150 feet to allow the proposed above-ground fuel tank to be located 850 feet from the nearest residential property. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that granting this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved for planning commission final action. Our next item tonight is Three Springs Hospitality LLC, care of Avet Van Almy.
Van Almy.
I hope pronounced that correctly, thank you. Have filed an application to rezonate tract of land containing approximately 4.03 acres located at Zero Kennelwood Way, approximately six tenths of a mile from Pasco Boulevard, from Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential with a general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting on January 12th for the four-acre parcel of land on Kennelwood Way. The current zoning is Highway Business, and it was rezoned to Highway Business in 1985. The current lot is vacant with a future land use designation of commercial. Looking at page two, just touch on one thing in the site characteristics review. The staff has noted that a majority of the parking spaces are proposed to be located south and west of the proposed buildings, some as much as 200 feet from the nearest building entrance. Next, looking at surrounding density, I'll go back to the land use map here. There are residential uses nearby, and the majority of these are mainly moderate density, being less than 13 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this development is 20.84 dwelling units per acre, and the planning commission should consider if an increase in density by just over one and a half times the general density in the area is compatible and appropriate in field development for this location. Looking on page three, touching on building orientation, you'll see that the proposed buildings will have a side-facing facade along Kennelwood Way, and staff has noted that the majority of the structures in the vicinity have front facades that are oriented toward the front property line. Staff suggested that new structures face Kennelwood Way. The applicants did agree to screen side and rear-facing facades along Kennelwood Way with a minimum 10-foot landscape buffer to contain at least six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. The planning commission should consider if this is adequate, given the proposed building height of three stories. Looking at the bottom of page three, the applicants did supply nine development plan conditions. I'll be happy to go over any of those in detail if needed. And then on page four, we have our Focus 2030 category review. We evaluated 15 items and found that seven of those items are in compliance. There are eight items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, and the staff has included a couple of points to consider on page one. The planning commission should consider these items when determining compliance with the eight action items on page four that are listed as might, or maybe being in compliance. And those points to consider on page one, the first states that residential uses, again, are mainly moderate density, less than 13 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density for this development is 20.84 dwelling units per acre. And then second, the preliminary development plan or the concept that's on the screen, again, incorporates side-facing facades along Kennelwood Way. The applicants did agree to screen the facades along Kennelwood Way, again, with six evergreens and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. And the planning commission should determine if this is an adequate screening, given the maximum building height, and the development plan conditions that states that the maximum building height would be three stories. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
So Rachel, as I look at the aerial map, I do see quite a bit of multifamily. How, are these single-story structures, or does this density we're referencing include, encompass a larger area?
So the density we looked at, it was just in general those multifamily uses that are located closest to the parcel. It's outlined in green on the land use map. As far as. As far as the heights of those structures, I believe many of those are one and two stories, just going off memory, but I know that we have it in the staff report here. If you include the commercial structures that are fronting Scottsville Road, some of those are as tall as four stories, but if I'm remembering correctly, it seems that the majority of the residential structures are one or two stories. I know that there's a newer development across the way here. I honestly can't remember if that, those are two or three-story structures, but the applicant, are those three stories?
There's some on down Pasco that are three-story.
Okay. And the hotel that's next door is taller as well.
Very good.
I guess to the north.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions for Ms. Hurd?
Thank you very much, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or their representative here would like to add additional comments?
Good evening, Chair Warren. Chris Davenport, nine-twenty-one College, swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Happy to represent Three Springs Hospitality tonight. Andy Van Molly, their principal, is here. You may tell by the name, Three Springs Hospitality, his primary business is hotels. So, this is actually, his request here is a downzone from an HB to a RM-four from a property that at one time he thought would probably be developed as a hotel. It's a lot of those in the immediate vicinity, and, but he's deciding to try to address the need we have for multifamily housing with what I will call an infill project. So, that's also noted in your staff report. I think that's a strong policy point that I wanna stress tonight. What I will say about the property is it does have some design, I guess, challenges, and if you saw me trying to close a door, you know why I have engineers with me. Mr. Shirley's here, who did the engineering work on this. There is a large TVA easement, you see that shaded. This is a very large, and this is a large easement. Brian tells me that corner pole has ten guy wires to it. I think this is servicing the Cave Mill substation. If you remember about fifteen years ago when that combination was worked, TVA brought those lines in, I think that's part of that project. At any rate, it's because of that and the drainage easement area that's depicted there while the buildings are oriented the way they are. From a design perspective, there's really no way to get around that. So, the only other thing I really wanna stress to you, this is three stories. There are, the immediate hotel is four stories next to it, there are a number in the area that are four stories. This is all stone, brick, hardy board materials, so it's got the amenities that we could provide on the lot with the dog park and the open space you see there. So, we think it's a good application. Again, I stress, it's a downzoning, and it's also, I think, taking advantage of some vacant area we have as an infill project.
Mr. Davenport, Commissioners question for Mr. Davenport?
So, Chris, I do see a tree line that separates this property from, let's call it, the cul-de-sac on Sun Court, and, so, is it, now, clearly, your client would have to take some of that out, but do they plan to leave as much as they can there?
If you don't, if, Rachel, could someone point which property line we're talking about? Is that the upper property line?
I'm looking at the aerial, Chris. Looking at this one right here. Yeah.
That's it.
So, there's a couple of places where clearly he'll have to get a little closer and take some of those out, but it looks like it's a fairly established tree line.
You know, I think the intention would be to leave as much of that as possible. We don't really, honestly, have a, we don't really have a DPC that addresses that, Commissioner Graham. It's not something that, I don't think we do.
Number four.
I'm sorry, yes.
It looks like Rachel's getting ready to help us with that.
So, we agreed to maintain all the healthy and mature vegetation within ten feet of that property line.
Perfect, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Davenport? Thank you.
Chris, what's the number of parking spaces?
I'm not sure about how many we show. I think it's eighty-four units, and as I recall, the number of spaces will actually be determined by the number of bedrooms. So, and I'm not sure if Mr. Van Molly has locked in on how his bedroom allocation will go, but when we present those building plans, they'll count those bedrooms and make sure we have the right number of parking spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Commissioners would call for a vote for this proposed...
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon our general development plan, docket number twenty-two-two-two-four ZBG. Based upon the testimony documented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Second.
Mr. Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to the Bowling Green City Commission. Our next item tonight is Blue Jay Properties LLC, care of Elizabeth Valdez and Jerry and Leslie Thomas. They filed an application to rezonate a portion of land containing approximately three-tenths of an acre located at zero Cemetery Road, approximately nine-tenths of a mile from Castle Heights Road, from agriculture to RE residential state with the general development plan.
Sir, thank you, Chair Warren.
We had a pre-application conference on January nineteenth of the property you see here, outlined in yellow. You will see that, again, that the zoning is ag, the land use is ag, the future land use is low density, and as we kinda look at the exhibit here, basically, what the applicants are trying to do tonight is take a small portion of this property zone agriculture there that you see to the right of your screen, and they are going to make it a part of the RE lot, that is, to the west that fronts Cemetery Road. So, the size of that area is, again, point-three-three acres, and the applicants came here just a couple of years ago in 2020 to do this rezoning from ag to RE. If you look over on page two, we've got our considerations for site characteristics and site design and compatibility. I'm not gonna belabor them, we can go over any of them in any kind of detail you all want, but as there's, it's just being added on to that additional lot. I don't know that we necessarily need to go over them in great detail. If you look on over to page three, you'll see your general development plan, development plan conditions. There is a single condition, which is a bit jargony, but basically says the conditions that are for this rezoned boundary will be mimicked in what was applied to the RE rezoning in 2020. And then, those DPCs are listed there below for your reference. Looking on over to the Focus 2030 category review, we got a baker dozen of items that are all in compliance. No items are not in compliance. And as we kinda flip back to page one, again, this is a cleanup rezoning where the applicants are looking to add that ag piece over to the RE piece, and the proposal is consistent with the flu and low-density residential category. It will result in the enlargement of the current residential lot to a total of one-point-three-three acres, and the remaining ag tract will retain an acreage of twelve-point-three-seven acres. That's all I've got for the staff report, but I can take questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you. Is the applicant here would like to add anything else to this? Is the applicant here? Do you have anything else you would like to add? All right.
There's not a lot of...
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that is in opposition to this request or has questions? Hearing none, Commissioners would ask for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty-two-two-two-five Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Motion is approved, and we'll go to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item tonight is twenty-two-two-two-six ZBG. The hub at Lover's Lane, care of Dave Chandler, had filed an application to rezonate a portion of tract of land containing approximately four-tenths of an acre, seventeen thirty-nine hundred square feet, located zero Cooksey Lane, approximately sixteen-tenths of a mile from Lover's Lane, from Highway Business to RM-four multifamily residential with a general development plan. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Chair Warren. You see, the property we have here highlighted in yellow, that is not an incorrect drawing, that is the actual property. So, we've got the zoning for that property, that small little sliver is HB for Highway Business, the land use is agriculture, the future land use is commercial in the Lover's Lane overlay, which you got that map there for your reference. And here is the exhibit, you kinda have to really look in at the arrows kinda pointing at that line that straddles these two properties that it's got pictured. This looks very similar to the one that we just went over where, again, the applicants are just taking from the RM-four property and adding it over to that HB tract that they had rezoned in 2017. There's development plan amendment in 2018, and then, a portion of the parent tract was rezoned RM-four in 2021. So, and the Urban Growth Design Review Board approved overlay plans, overlay development plans for each of these properties just last month. So, it's seventeen hundred square feet, and again, that's just to clean up that site for the zoning lines. If you look on over to page two, again, we've got the site characteristics review and site design and compatibility review. I'm not gonna go over any of those in detail unless you all want. Same with the area-specific policy review, all the applicable policies that applied last time apply now. And then, if you look on down to the general development plan, development plan conditions, again, it's got a single development plan condition that just basically reverts it to the development plan conditions for the parent tract, and then, those are listed for your reference following on page four, I believe. Yep. You've got your Focus 2030 category review, which has twenty-one items the staff identified, all of which are in compliance, none of which are out of compliance. And again, just kicking back to page one, one more time, we've got the purpose of this application being to adjust the zoning line for the proposed multifamily lot, and the proposed DPCs are identical to those approved in 2021. So, that's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Zach. Mr. Jones, Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones? Is, hearing none, is the applicant here or their representative, and any comments you would like to make?
Brian Shirley, one-one-three-six South Park Drive, and I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chandler couldn't be here tonight, but through emails, with correspondence with staff, he's gonna be a authority representative here tonight. And like you're saying, this is just a cleanup zoning. The original concept had a different building size, we increased the size of the building a little bit, necessitated moving the property line five feet over, and that's probably all this is, is cleaning it up.
Sir. Thank you for your time. Is there anyone in the audience or anybody has questions? Okay. Commissioners would call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty-two-two-two-six ZBG. Based upon a testimony and document presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Motion is approved, and we'll go to the Bowling Green City Commission for approval. Our next item tonight is twenty-two-two-two-seven Z County, custom-designed-build LLC, care of Darrell Oliver, has filed an application to rezonate a tract of land containing approximately fifteen-point-seven-nine acres located at zero Mount Pleasant School Road, approximately nineteen-tenths of a mile from H.E. Johnson Road, from agriculture to RE residential state with the general development plan.
Thank you, Chair Warren. Like the last two, this is just a cleanup to get this zone from ag to, I'm just kidding. We got the property you see here outlined in yellow, we had a pre-app on February second, it's zoned ag, land use ag, future land use low density, and you've got your exhibit here. The applicants, again, proposing to develop thirteen single-family residential lots on this fifteen-point-seven-nine-one-two acres with a proposed density of zero-point-eight-two dwelling units per acre. If we look on over to page two, you'll see the considerations for that, the low-density residential future land use map category, a variety of site characteristics, review criteria, we will circle back to it, but we'll call out the road width of Old Mount Pleasant School Road being fourteen feet, and there is a public sanitary sewer not available to this property. The applicants made considerations for that in DPC number eleven, which I'll touch on in a moment, and in terms of natural features, there are known sinkholes that they addressed in the DPCs, and there are some trees on the property, which I'm gonna come back to again. So, looking on over to page three, you'll see the considerations for site design compatibility review. Within a quarter mile, the densities range from zero to one-point-zero-six dwelling units per acre with a median density of point-one-five and an average density of point-two-five dwelling units per acre. Then, half-mile, that expands to zero to two-point-four-seven dwelling units per acre with a median of point-two and an average of point-three-seven. And then, looking on down, again, that proposed density for this development is zero-point-eight-nine dwelling units per acre. Looking on down at the surrounding architectural features, we'll call out, there's, homes are mainly one-story in height with the home size ranging from sixteen-hundred to roughly thirty-two-hundred square feet with a median of two-thousand and an average home size of two-thousand square feet. And the applicants in their DPCs committed to a minimum of eighteen-hundred square feet. Looking on over to page three, if we don't wanna go over any of the site design compatibility review, we'll look at the traffic impact study requirements. TIS was not required by Public Works, Warren County Public Works, in lieu of the applicant widening Old Mount Pleasant School Road to a minimum of eighteen feet in width, and the applicants agreed to that requirement in DPC eight. And I say that from the development entrance to H.E. Johnson Road on Old Mount Pleasant School Road. Looking down at the DPCs, number one deals with maximum building lots, which is thirteen. Number two, sites at that minimum square feet will be eighteen-hundred for the homes. Number three, requires a two-car attached garage. Number four, limits building height to two stories. Number five deals with the exteriors of structures, and they will be brick, stone, drive-up vinyl, LP smart siding, cement-based siding, man-made stone, or other modern masonry materials. Vinyl siding shall be used in soffits or gables only, and neither split-face block nor plain-face block shall be utilized for foundations. Number six deals with utility location, it'll be underground. Number seven deals with tree preservation, that the developer shall make all reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees not existing within building envelopes, areas of utility placement, roadways, driveways, and that the developer shall plant a minimum of two trees per lot. of two trees per lot. Number eight requires that the development will be served by internal streets and that the developer will widen old Mount Pleasant School Road, as I mentioned before. Number nine requires side and rear facades of any homes on lots immediately adjacent to old Mount Pleasant School Road be screened from that road via landscape buffer, no less than ten feet in width and no less than six evergreen trees, three deciduous per hundred linear feet. Number ten deals with sinkhole mitigation and preservation and wetland mitigation and preservation. Number eleven deals with the septic system approval by the Barren River Health Department. And number twelve deals with the development plan conditions that shall turn into number two, three, four, and five, that shall turn into plat restrictions or private restrictions when that subdivision plat is recorded. Looking on down to focus 2030 category review, we've got a variety of things. I'm going to hit on the highlights and the points to consider, but they are there for your reference, and we can flip back to those now. Looking on page one, within a quarter mile, the median density is point one five dwelling units per acre, again, within a half mile, it's point two. And for densities for subdivisions depicted on the attached density map, which is right there for your reference, they range from point one-two to point nine-eight. The proposed density for this development is point eight-two dwelling units per acre. Again, old Mount Pleasant School Road is fourteen feet, though the applicants are, again, committing to widen that to eighteen feet for a portion of old Mount Pleasant School Road. Number three, the proposed DPC number seven requires that developers make all reasonable efforts to maintain those healthy trees that are not in building envelopes, utility placement, roads, drives, et cetera. But there are mature trees clustered in the northern portion of the property and natural tree lines around the northern, eastern, and western property lines. The proposed building envelopes, roadway, and driveway installation will likely impact the majority of the wooded area and will result in some loss of tree canopy. That said, the applicants did commit, again, to two trees per lot being planted in DPC number seven. And the existing homes on old Mount Pleasant School Road, or homes fronting old Mount Pleasant School Road are oriented, face the roadway. New homes are proposed to face interior streets. The applicants agreed to screen side or rear-facing facades along old Mount Pleasant School Road with that six evergreen, three deciduous per hundred linear feet requirement. Screening requirement is only applicable to property lines adjacent to old Mount Pleasant School Road. Visual impact of side and rear-facing facades may further be minimized if the existing trees located around the perimeter of old Mount Pleasant School Road nearest to it are also preserved and maintained. And lastly, if streetlights are installed within the proposed development, there's no requirement that such be uniform. That is all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Commissioners, any questions, or there might be some questions for the applicants, but any questions for Mr. Jones right now?
So, this might be a staff question, clearly, I guess it is for the applicant. To my simple mind, I think I understand the intent in DPC number nine because it clearly says vinyl siding shall be used in soffits only. But in the preceding sentence, it allows vinyl siding as an exterior veneer, which opens the entire project to vinyl, a hundred percent vinyl siding. So, am I missing something there? Is that just an omission of some type?
Not sure. I'll let the applicants clarify. I mean, the way I read it, it seems like they're allowing, again, that vinyl only in the undersides, and it's counting that building material as that in the first sentence, if that makes any sense. But if that's not their intention, I'll let them clarify.
Clarification.
Yeah, I think we'll just get clarification from the applicant then. All right, thank you.
For sure.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, Zach, very much. Mr. Davenport, you've already been sworn in. If you represent the applicant, please.
Thank you. On behalf of the applicant, let me answer that question first. So, DPC number five actually reads vinyl siding shall be used in soffits or gables only. So, the reason why I think those two do jive, it can be an exterior facade, but only to the extent it's on the gable. So, you can think of a second-story gable, and I don't have a picture to show you, but that would be, that could be the exterior facade on that gable.
Okay, so it's your intent, I think I understand what you're saying, and so clearly we've stated that the vinyl siding that's used, we've categorized that and said that can only be used in a gable or soffit area.
Yeah, and that also means that you will not have any vinyl on the first story because the first story of the home couldn't be a gable.
Got it.
And I will, for those of you that were here, and I don't have the date in front of me, it was within the last four to six weeks, we actually had, I presented an application for this lot right here. And that lot passed, I think it was unanimous, but it passed, it's pending fiscal court approval with these identical DPCs. That DPC was actually amended on the floor to that language as an alternative. This may ring your memory. I mentioned that sometimes we'll have an application and we'll say that no more than twenty-five percent can be vinyl, which means you end up with a front facade that's vinyl, or no more than so many percentage of the homes will be vinyl. And what we came with on the floor that night was this DPC that allows some vinyl, admittedly a very small percentage of the home with facades would be vinyl, but it would be soffits and gables only.
Yeah, if it's restricted to gables and soffits, I don't have any issue with that at all. My next question, Chris, I assume your client doesn't have any objection to the uniformity of streetlights?
To the extent they're developed, they are included, they would not, but I'll be frank with you, they don't intend to put in streetlights.
Okay, just for the odd chance that he decides not to develop it and someone else comes along and buys it, do you have any objection to adding that if they are installed, they will be uniform?
Objection to that.
All right, very good. And so, I'll let you and Hamp work out the details there for a DPC.
How about we include that on number six? Does that, staff, does that look reasonable? That's the DPC that deals with utilities?
Lights, if installed, comma, shall be uniform.
That sounds perfect. Mr. Oliver, would you come up, please?
Mr. If you'd state your name and address, please, sir.
Darrell Oliver, 2711 Claypool Abington Road, Bowling Green.
Swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver, did you hear that development condition?
I did.
Do you agree to it?
That's fine, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
So, with that, I don't really have any more, anything else to add. Again, this is, and I'll just tell you, this property, these properties were purchased at the same auction with, there is some commonality between the developers, they're not identical, but there's some commonality. And so, this development, it's a little bit smaller. I think this is twenty-five lots on twenty-seven something acres. This is thirteen lots on fifteen something acres. But all the other conditions are the same.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Any other questions for Mr. Davenport? Hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and condition upon our general development plan, docket number 202227Z County, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further request, this motion include a summary of testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
For the record, if there's any opposition in the...
Were there any opposition to this? Chris, you have any opposition?
No.
I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Counselor. There is no opposition. Excuse my oversight.
Mr. Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, the motion is approved and will go to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you very much. Our first item tonight, I believe our applicant is here, was 202220Z County Joseph E. and Nancy Crafton have filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately one point three acres located 888 Old Zion Church Road from agriculture to RE residential estate with a general development plan. If this is approved, they've applied for a waiver from the maximum lot coverage on a portion of land containing a tract of land located 888 Old Zion Church Road. This property is owned agriculture. Mr. Rain?
Up here. Looks like we had a pre-application meeting on July 27th for the property that you discussed and that is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is agriculture. Proposed zoning is RE. The proposed land use, single-family residential, and the future land use is agriculture. The applicants are proposing to rezone a portion of the property located at 888 Old Zion Church Road from agriculture to RE in order to subdivide the existing residence on one point three zero acres. The remaining portion of the lot will be added to an adjacent agriculture tract. If successful, the applicants are requesting an eighteen percent waiver from the maximum thirty percent lot coverage requirement to allow a total lot coverage of forty-eight percent. If you flip over, I'll note under the site characteristics review, the layout, lot size, and setbacks, that the applicants could subdivide the current residence on a larger lot that complies with the maximum lot coverage requirements in the RE zone. This would alleviate the need for the proposed waiver application. There's site design and compatibility review, if you glance at those. Moving over to the development plan conditions, they have, the applicant has listed seven. I won't go over those, but in summary, the proposed general development plan meets a majority of the review criteria addressed during the review process. The focus 2030 category review, staff identified seventeen items, and the planning commission should determine if seven of those are indeed in compliance. Flipping over to page four, we get into the waiver findings there on four, and it carries over into page five. The planning commission should determine if the applicants have provided sufficient information to address the above referenced findings for a waiver request. Flipping back over to the first page, under points to consider, the applicants could subdivide the current residence on a larger lot, on a lot larger than one point three acres that would result in compliance with the maximum lot coverage requirements in the RE zone. This would alleviate the need for a waiver application that is proposed in conjunction with the zone change request. That is all the staff has. I can go into further detail if you need, or answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions?
So, you stated in the staff report that they could divide it into a larger lot. I assume this was a conversation that was had in the pre-hearing or pre-conference. What was the reason for not? Do you, anybody recall, or do I need to just address that to the applicant? Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Graham. The applicant, if you would approach the microphone, please, sir. If you would state your name and your address, please, sir.
Joe Crafton, 888 Old Zion Church Road, Woodman.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Graham had a question.
So, Mr. Crafton, the staff has pointed out that you could subdivide this in a way that would not require a waiver. And so, if you would tell us why you're requesting the waiver, why you've chosen not to submit your application that would already comply.
Land all around it, well, both sides of the lot that would extend on further back is owned now by one of my sons. He's building a new house over to the left of this picture. It, there's also a barn to the left and a big pond. If the lot was extended out any further from these buildings, it'd be impossible to get into the front of those barns with any kind of equipment or wagon, you know, anything like that. And the reason for the whole thing is he owns both sides, and he wanted to be sure to have the center part to connect him with his farm over here and here, you know.
Okay, and so, as I look at...
About access, basically.
Access.
Yeah, yeah, basically, without having to drive all the way around.
So, as I look at the aerial map, maybe the pond is there and it's just not shown in the aerial map. Could someone point out the pond we're referring to?
It's not on the aerial map. Mr. Crafton, is the pond, if we're looking at this, is it to the left?
Left of the big barn right up in the corner.
The left, okay. Maybe it's cut off then. There is an aerial here, but you just can't see it.
And also, the other barn is just to the left.
You can see the barn on the aerial.
Yeah, yeah.
Pond, it's really faint. It's under the, it's on the land use map. It's like a white-brown circle.
So, if I understand correctly, if you made it any larger, now you can't get in because you've restricted, you can't get around the barn in order to get to the, can't get around the pond in order to get to the barn.
He can't, or I can't.
Yeah, so if you made this larger, if you made the lot larger, you wouldn't be able to get around the pond in order to get access to the barn. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
To both barns, you know. And he wanted to get all he could get, you know, to connect him with his other barns and everything back over to the side.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crafton. Any other questions, commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or opposition to this? Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number 202220Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, this proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further request, this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Motion is approved and goes to the Warren County Fiscal Court.
Thank you, Mr. Crafton.
One more, one more.
Oh, the waiver, excuse me, excuse me. Hold on a minute, Mr. Crafton, I apologize. Call for a motion for the waiver, please.
I make a motion to approve the request for a waiver for a portion of 888 Old Zion Church Road, docket number 2022V07, a waiver of eighteen percent to allow a total lot coverage of forty-eight percent of the property. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that granting this waiver will not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations. I further find that this waiver will not violate the comprehensive plan. The extent of the waiver or the regulation is the minimum necessary to afford relief to the applicant, and so I've got either, you've confused me here, Camp, what am I doing? Do I read all three of those?
You don't have to.
I don't?
As you see fit.
As I...
Take the ones that you feel...
One. Is that the extent of the motion?
Second. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Drain.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approved, planning zoning final action.
Sorry, Hamp, I didn't mean to blame that on you. It's, I'm easily confused, so it wasn't your fault.
Thank you, Mr. Craft. Ben, do we have any new business for tonight?
No new business, just got a couple things I want to mention real quick. So just upcoming schedule reminder, April 21st, we'll have a full board meeting. That'll be our called meeting where, where we're kind of doing a makeup there. May 5th will be a full board meeting as well, but that's where we'll, we'll meet here and we'll do a training. I think I sent some correspondence out on that. Then May 19th will also be a full meeting, and that's where we get back on our regular, regular schedule from, from that point forward. I did send out some information by email on the tornado-damaged neighborhoods and kind of our rezoning process, where we're at with that. If all goes well with our second round of meetings with the neighborhoods, you may see that on the May 19th schedule. Looking to try and get back on track with our comp plan update. With everything going on, it's been difficult, but we're going to try to get back on track with that. Just kind of a side note, we had to buy more signs because we've got so much going on. We have 37 signs out right now for various different applications. So we got a lot going on. Last, I sent some correspondence out about two, two job openings we have advertised. I think we have Zach for, for one more meeting, but Monica, this is her last meeting. Of course, we appreciate her service to the community and to this board, and wish her well on her new adventures on the hills at WKU. So thank you, Monica.
Monica.
That's all I have.
We want to thank Zach, we'll see you, but want to thank both of you for your all service to the community and to us, and wish you well. Hearing no other items, we stand adjourned tonight. Thank you all for being here.